Thank you. All else fails, go to paper. So we have tonight a presentation by Trails 2000, and I'll ask Ms. Metz to do the introduction, please.
Good evening, Mayor Mel Marbury and members of the City Council. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Mary Monroe Brown. She is the Executive Director of Trails 2000. And Trails 2000 has provided a report for the Council of their tremendous benefit to our community on behalf of the City Director. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Mayor Protem, thank you for having me here tonight. Christina Rinderly on our board and John Baxter on our board are here to provide me moral support. So thanks for the opportunity to provide you a recap of our season and our partnership with the City of Durango. For almost 30 years, Trails 2000 has been an independent nonprofit partner with the city, the county, the Forests, and the BLM, formed to build and maintain trails, educate trail users, and encourage connectivity on road, path, and trail. Durango has over 300 miles of trails within 30 minutes of downtown. And we want to talk a little bit about overall what we do and about this saying, "Great community builds great trails." It's a forefront of how our organization runs, and we can't do one without the other. Having these great trails, the 300 miles within 30 minutes of town, an economic driver for Durango, a reason that we've been listed in Outside Magazine, Sunset Magazine, National Magazines, as a great place to live, partially because of the outdoor recreation feature, and that part of a great community, we have a community that volunteers annually over 5,000 hours of volunteer work to help create this trails community. We work with the city on a variety of trail projects. And we have projects in the making right now that are going through a review period. We have projects that we've finished up this year, starting last year. And I'm going to just focus more on what we've been doing overall this year. We have proposals for new trails, such as a commuter route to Fort Lewis College, a trail connection into the Sky Ridge neighborhood, a stewardship project in Overend on Ned's Hill to help with drainage and debris flow. And in addition to that, we've been doing a great deal of maintenance on the area trails. I have a listing of some of those maintenance areas and how we partner with the city on getting this work done on the city open space. And the listing that you see in front of you is focused on what we've done just in the last 10 months. We also work with private land that may someday become city, and we work with those partners. We've built five-plus miles of trail in Three Springs, and that's been a big benefit to the neighborhood. We built the NICA, the High School League State Championship Course, which brought in over 850 riders up on Durango Mesa. And we partner with groups all over town, from Fort Lewis College, Durango Devote, the Durango Running Company Club, Seniors Outdoors, in order to build and maintain those trails. In addition to trail work, maintenance, we do a great deal of stewardship and trail cleanup. And we do this under, we have 20 seasonal paid crew leaders that are all certified crew leaders that manage the volunteers that come out to do the trail work.
Happy trails!
The city, as you know, has invested a great deal in the open space. From 1994 to 2018, the Parks and Open Space have preserved over 3,000 acres. And the partnership with Trails 2000 helps then leverage your purchase of the open space so we can get out and create that access for the public. We value the work that we do, the 5,000 hours that's conservatively valued at over $140,000 in value. The national average for trail work and volunteers is $28 an hour. In addition, then, we have staff time, paid crew leaders, our SAW teams that go out and cut down trees, trucks, tools, organizational expenses, trail oversight, mapping, website information, that then we also bring to the table to leverage our relationship. As you know, trails are often cited as a top reason people move to and visit Durango, as was cited in the Parks, Open Space, and Trails Master Plan. Trails are fun. So Victor Locke produced this video for us, and this was a great partnership between the city and Fort Lewis College and the volunteers who came out to build 540 steps connecting town up to FLC. We do a lot of education to help people understand that our trails are multi-use, and we promote the "Share the Trails" ethic. And we have a really high participation rate, very low user conflict in Durango. A lot of people look to how Durango is operating and managing trail networks because we have a successful system that features multi-use and opportunities for people to get out and use the trails in many ways.
Deer and elk means safe harbors during the winter. That's why we have seasonal wildlife closures in some areas around Durango. These closures are essential for the animals to survive. Even when there's no snow on the ground, these areas are critical for animals to make it through the winter.
It's important to respect the wildlife closures. It's up to me.
It's up to us.
It's up to me.
It's up to all of us to protect wildlife in Colorado. To learn more about seasonal closures, please go to the Trails 2000 website. And to learn more about good wildlife in Colorado, go to the Colorado Parks and Wildlife website.
Those closures are going on right now, December 1st to April 15th. And as you know, the city has several places that have wildlife closures included. We also have a Trail Kids program where we work with over 800 middle school students to help them understand stewardship and giving back to trails and trail ethics. We have a strong and robust marketing communications plan, which we work with the city to help you get word out, whether that was about the 416 fire or trail closures, or what's open and available, and what is open for the public to use. And I kept that in because today is Colorado Give Day. And I think Brigette with the Community Foundation, I think she was in the audience, she organized a fantastic collaboration of 65 nonprofits today to help with Colorado Give Day. So I want to thank the city staff. We work with the staff throughout the year. And thank Council for your support as we accomplished all of our goals this season. Do you want to end to that? We just wanted to say thank you. You know, I think the city has been doing a great job with listening sessions throughout the community. And I think it's not often that the city staff and City Council are recognized for the contributions that you do. And especially Kathy's been great with helping us queue up the projects that Mary has in line for the books for the next year. And it's important that we have those working with city staff to get them lined up as soon as possible so that when volunteers present themselves and those amazing volunteer hours that Mary is able to leverage, when those opportunities present themselves with volunteers, that we have projects that are ready to go for those volunteers and positioning them. So we really appreciate that and are excited to get going on our 2019 goals. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary.
I could give her a round of applause.
I think we all believe that Durango's a very unique destination. Most of us who are in this room are lucky enough to live here for a variety of reasons. I appreciate the clean air, the good water, the caring community that we live in. But there's something even more than that, and that's been our experiences in the four corners, the outdoors. It's not just Durango or just our trails. We have Mesa Verde, we have national monuments around here. But people come to our area to celebrate what they don't have. You know, and that's paid for by our 2015 sales tax, a little bit, and our 205 sales tax, a little bit. And voters were very clear that they supported that use of sales tax for trail maintenance, for expanding the trails. I know we have projects coming up on Animus View Drive, and that will be their sidewalk when that is extended. Because they don't have sidewalks and curbs and gutters on Animus View Drive. It was a county road that was annexed into the city. They aren't as lucky as I am or as you that has a sidewalk. So we see all kinds of benefits from our trails and our parks and our beautiful open space that brings so many people to your town. And we're just lucky to live here because we get to enjoy it 365 days a year, not just on a vacation. And with that, we have a presentation from Ms. Metz on Lake Nighthorse.
Good evening again, City Council. Don't have any fancy videos here for you, so it's hard to compete with Trails 2000. I think we all appreciate everything that they do for our community. Another great asset that we opened to the public this summer was Lake Nighthorse Recreation Area. And what we're providing to you is an interim report. And the reason it's an interim report is because we still are collecting some expenditures that will continue to occur through the rest of 2018. And so the information that we give you is capturing everything about Lake Nighthorse. It just doesn't cover those remaining expenditures since we closed the lake on November 15th. So I just wanted to remind Council of that. One of the things that I want to do is sort of highlight some of the great things that happened this year at Lake Nighthorse. We opened March 31st, and that opening weekend, which was Easter weekend, we had over 1,000 people come to the lake. And the first people at the lake were kids, as it should be, and they caught a lot of big fish. And it was just a great celebration for our community and very well received. And then, over the course of the season, until we closed on the 15th of November, we had over 48,000 people come to Lake Nighthorse. These were people from the city of Durango, La Plata County. We saw a lot of out-of-state license plates. And people did come. And I think that they appreciated the opportunity to finally be able to use this new jewel in our community. We did have some interruptions in service over the course of the year. You all are aware that we closed the boat ramp for 35 days in the month of May and June because the Bureau of Reclamation had to reconstruct the parking lot right by the boat ramp. And so that was a key period of time during normal recreational times. We did stay open to the public during those periods of the boat ramp, parking lot being reconstructed, but no motorized activities happened there because they couldn't launch boats. And then we all remember the 416 fire. The lake was closed, as all of our open space was, for nine days. And we had about two months of smoke-filled skies where people didn't want to recreate outside. They didn't want to use our trails. They didn't want to come to Lake Nighthorse because it was just too smoky outside and too uncomfortable to breathe that hazardous air. And so we did have a few challenges with the service, but despite that, 48,000 people came to Lake Nighthorse. We developed an operations plan in partnership with the Bureau of Reclamation, the Animus La Plata Operation Maintenance and Replacement Association, and most importantly, the City Council and members of our community before we opened the lake. And what we'd like to do tonight is report to you how we upheld the three primary goals for Lake Nighthorse this year that we set aside in the operations plan that we were going to follow for this year. The first thing was protecting the resources. Lake Nighthorse wasn't built for recreation. It was built for water, to serve water for not only the city of Durango, but many partners. And so water quality has always been the most important resource that we want to protect. As you know, Lake Nighthorse is very rich in natural and cultural resources. And we wanted to keep those invasive species out of our lake. And we did that by having certified staff that follow the state protocol. We inspected both in-going and outgoing over 3,600 boats. And one of the things that I would point out is of those boats coming in, almost 600 had to be decontaminated. And that number is very high for an inspection station. And the reason that it's so high is because we have close reservoirs that are infected. Lake Powell is not very far from Durango. A lot of Durango residents have boats. They go to Lake Powell, and then they come to Lake Nighthorse. Those boats came to Lake Nighthorse, had to be decontaminated. We also have people that like to go to Navajo. It's a wonderful reservoir, but it also has a Eurasian water mill foil, which is a plant that is invasive. And so we had to decon for that as well. And so we were busy with that decon effort and keeping the waters clean. The other thing that we wanted to do was to provide quality recreational experiences to the public. And it was interesting for us to know that of that 48,000, 33,000 were day-use individuals. We did have certainly a lot of visits from people that bought annual passes, but in 2019, most of the people that came to Lake Nighthorse were buying a day-use pass. And all of the people that were there, I think it's so important for you to know that we had great presence from the Durango Police Department. And we certainly appreciated their support during the year. But there were only three citations issued by the Durango Police Department all year at Lake Nighthorse. So that tells you a lot about that people were having fun, but they were being careful. One of the things that we wanted to provide for you is the type of recreational experiences that we observed at Lake Nighthorse. And this gives you a summary list of highest to lowest based on our analysis that we did on the data that we received from individuals that came into the lake. And this sort of captures the information a little bit differently in terms of user groups. So the highest user group was the stand-up paddleboard kayak and canoe paddle community, 37%. The next highest was walking, running, or dog walking along the shore. So they weren't even on the water. And then the next highest was people fishing by foot, and that was 14%. So over 74% of the people that came to Lake Nighthorse were passive use. And so I think that that's important for the community to know that we were tracking this data, and we wanted to make sure that we shared that with the Council and other interested members of the community. The third thing that was really important to the community is making sure that we are financially viable as we go forward in the management of Lake Nighthorse in 2018 or in our year and into the future. Now, keep in mind, these expenditures that we're showing to you are only through November 14th. And we still are incurring expenses at Lake Nighthorse because we have full-time staff and other expenses. And so this cost recovery, which is just about 77%, will of course go down. It won't be that high at the end of the year. And so, but I wanted to let the Council know this is where we stand today. And, you know, we are actually very pleased with these results, with all of the challenges that we had, with closures and interruptions of service. We think that this is a great start to the year. It will only go up from here. And we also invested about $1.2 million in the capital improvements at Lake Nighthorse that we've discussed with the Council previously. The recreation schedule, I think, was well-received by the community. We had two days that were weightless. Boats were allowed, motorized boats were allowed when boating started for motorized boats on the 15th of May. And we kept that schedule throughout the season. And we are looking at a very similar type of schedule and use for 2019. We felt that this year was a good start, and we should have a similar schedule by starting in early April and then going again through the 14th of November. Because we have a mandatory seasonal closure for wildlife, the 15th of November through the March 31st. The entrance fees, as you know, we had a lot of conversation about the entrance fees, and we followed the market comparables. We wanted to make sure that we were competitive so that people did choose to recreate there because it is a choice. And we are anticipating that our fee schedule will remain the same for 2019. As you remember, we did a lot of work on zoning the lake for recreation. We had no wake areas and no motorized craft areas and an open use area. And what that did is provided a great opportunity for people to do the type of recreation that they were interested in and not have user conflicts. And we honestly did not have that. And so that was very successful this year in our first year. So that's all the information we had. And thank you for this opportunity to present our findings for Lake Nighthorse for this year. And if you have questions, happy to respond to them.
Tell us which sales tax helps to support Lake Nighthorse.
We utilize the 2015 sales tax to support the operational subsidy. So earlier, we showed what the cost for, covered the cost of operations. Part of the loss, as you remember, is covered by the Bureau of Reclamation. They're paying 50% of our loss. The other 50% of the loss is paid for by the 2015 sales tax. We did also utilize the 2005 sales tax for some capital improvements at Lake Nighthorse. So actually, this year, we use both funds to help us not burden the general fund with this new recreational entity.
Excellent. Any questions?
What are the scheduled improvements for the next couple of years? For 2019, one of the things that we found to be very important is that there was a lot of requests for individuals that either had mobility challenges or disabilities. And if you had been to Lake Nighthorse, you know that there really is a great access for people for ADA needs to get to the water's edge. So we're going to be providing a walkway that is ADA-accessible and a dock for those individuals to get right to the water's edge for recreating, fishing. So that's one improvement that we're doing. And then the second thing is, we, you know, as you saw, we did decon a number of boats. Currently, we have to go down to the Animus La Plata Operation and Maintenance Association to get a fire hydrant and use the fire hydrant to fill up our hydro blaster, the unit that we use to decon the boats. And it's not very efficient, quite honestly, to run down and fill up a tank and bring it back. And so what we'd like to do is drill a well, a water well. And that well will be available for use for the decon of the boats. We cannot use lake water for decon. And so we need to use either potable water, which would be very expensive to bring up to Lake Nighthorse as a capital improvement. And that's why right now, we're running to a fire hydrant. And so we'd like to drill a well. And then that well will also serve a future building in many years into the future to replace the current facility that we have.
I have to say that Dick and I, in 2011, when we were elected, almost immediately, the next day, people said, "When are you going to open Lake Nighthorse?" And so that was a conversation that started in 2011. And the City Council has been to many meetings and worked with many partners and stakeholders. And so I'm so pleased that that has actually happened for our community. Not only the recreation, but the potential for our water supply is just enormous. So thank you so much. Any other comments?
I've got a couple of questions. I noticed in the fee schedule that included punch passes.
Yes.
And I was wondering how many of the day-use included punch passes. My guess is this year, people were, well, we're not sure exactly how much we're going to use it. And I think punch passes are a wonderful way of encouraging people to say, "Well, I'm going to use it several times, but I don't know if it's going to be worthwhile to get a season pass."
Right.
And I think, so I'd be curious how much, how many punch passes you had this year.
So what we did, when we started the year, we didn't offer the option of a punch pass. We just had an annual pass for day use. And then mid-season, we thought, gee, it might be a good idea to add that punch pass as an option. So you could buy a punch pass for $30, and it was for five visits. And so we counted those punch pass users as day use. So in that number of 33,000, included people that were paid for the day and people that bought five punches to come in and utilize the facility five times during the course of the summer. And so that was very popular, you're right. And so many people did want to make that investment. And so rather than starting at mid-season in 2019, Dick, we'd like to go ahead and offer that right out of the gates for people that are not sure. And what we find is the same pattern for the recreation center, where individuals like a choice. And they either like an annual pass or a punch pass, or they pay by the day, depending on how often they anticipate they might be able to recreate.
It's worth mentioning that I made the suggestion to Hillcrest Golf Course that they can do that when they were raising membership rates a couple of years ago, and they have. And it's very, again, it's a very popular program because not everyone is going to be a sufficiently heavy user to justify the cost of a season pass. And I did have one other, actually, two other questions. And I think, I don't think I will ask for answer on the usage through the season, but I would hope that the final report might include how the variation, including the downtime in the spring, to see how that varied. And we're also wondering about, you know, late-season paddleboarding and how much that went through. I would simply remark that the heavy use by passive users was really, really striking and actually consistent with the very large volume of comments we received about a year ago when the plan was on the table. And the one other final comment was, I read recently that CPW is increasing some of their fees. And I was wondering if the city might consider matching.
Yeah, so what CPW is doing, and there was legislation that was introduced this year and will be effective January of 2019. They will be charging anyone that registers their boat in the state of Colorado an ANS, Aquatic Nuisance Species Stamp. And so that will pay for the decon and the inspection process across the state of Colorado. And so we are speaking with Colorado Parks and Wildlife to see how Lake Nighthorse, which is an eligible reservoir, might be able to partner with Colorado Parks and Recreation to get some of that funding to help us with our expenses associated with the decon.
That would be nice.
Yes. And so we do not have an answer, but we are exploring that opportunity.
And I would simply finish my comments by acknowledging all of the hard work staff has been doing, especially Kathy, for the eight years that it has taken has been doing, especially Kathy, for the eight years that it has taken to go from the original discussion down to the present time. I know that there were a lot of hard negotiations behind that and we really appreciate the effort.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Appreciate it. We, I just wanted to remind anyone, if you came in late and you haven't had a chance to sign in, if you'd like to talk to city council, city manager, if you would take that back down, I think I see someone who would like to talk during public participation. So you just need to sign up and anything you'd like to say that's not on the agenda, we'd love to hear from you. With that, we're going to move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item Number Six. Ms. Phillips, will you read for us, please?
Certainly. Item 4.1 is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of November 19, 2018. 4.2, discussion of possible action concerning the creation of a project in the Airport Capital Projects Fund. 4.3, discussion of possible action to consider Resolution R. 201848, adopting the 2019 Durango Business Improvement District Budget and Operating Plan. 4.4 through 4.8, a request for public hearings with a proposed date of December 18, 2018. 4.4 is to consider the adoption of the 2018 Multi-Jurisdictional Hazardous Mitigation Plan, Volume One for La Plata County and the City of Durango Annex and Volume Two, as approved by FEMA as the mitigation plan for the City of Durango. 4.5 is to consider an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango, amending definitions and discharge regulations to provide for our fats, oil, and grease inspection program. 4.6 is to consider an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, City of Durango, revising the application of certain provisions of the Colorado Fair Campaign Practices Act to Durango Municipal Elections. 4.7 is to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 25, Article 3, Section 25-114, in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango, amending the charges established for water service provision by the City of Durango Utilities Department. And Item 4.8 is to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 25, Article 2, Section 25-30, in the Code of Ordinances, City of Durango, amending the charges established for water service provision by the City of Durango's Utility Department.
I would mention, I believe, 4.7 and 4.8, a public hearing would be December the 18th.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any city councilor would like to remove an item? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for...
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Roll call, please. Counselor Y?
Yes.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor Bricky?
Yes.
Mayor Frank Timusov?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes.
Moving into the public participation section, this section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City council will not respond to the questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to the city council. Citizens wishing to speak during this section of the agenda shall sign in prior to the start of the meeting, identifying their name and address on the form provided at the meeting. Citizens will be called by the mayor to come to the podium. Comments are limited to three minutes. The city manager will signal 30 seconds remaining by raising his hand. Any audiovisual materials must be provided to the city clerk on or before noon of the day of the meeting. I've asked one of our youth, Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, Stella Potemkin, to come tonight. So Stella, would you, and representing my act, please come to the podium? And the folks from the Common Grounds as well? And Stella can tell us all about Noel Night and what the youth are doing downtown and the beneficiary of that. Stella, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Stella Potemkin and this is...
I'm Alma Wolf. And we're the co-chairs of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. And we just wanted to let everybody know about an event that we're having on Noel Night, which is this Friday. It's called the Holly Jolly Trolley, which is a mouthful. And we will be wrapping presents and providing hot chocolate for donation. So we'll be gift wrapping inside the trolley. The transit department is also going to be selling passes in the trolley, but it's going to be parked in front of the Welcome Center at 8th and Main. And all of the donations that come from this event will be given to Common Grounds. We have some people from the Common Grounds Cafe to talk about that.
So first off, I just want to thank these guys for all their hard work. Well, I'm Devin Parsons and I'm one of the teachers that oversees Common Grounds.
And I'm Karen Croft and I am also a teacher representing Common Grounds at Durango High School.
And then we have a paraprofessional, Cory, back there who runs the day-to-day. She does an amazing job. But just to give a quick background on Common Grounds, this is the coffee cart that's in the lobby of the Durango Public Library. It's a work experience for our students. Our students have disabilities. So our students are at Durango High School. And then also in my program, which is called Pathways to Independence, serves 18 to 21-year-old students with disabilities. It's still under the umbrella of Durango Diner School District. So all of our students are volunteering their time. They, we have more students than we have shifts available. They love working over there. From our, from what we gather from the general public, they love coming and seeing our students. It's been a great experience for them to grow. It's, it's great to see our students, who oftentimes might have a difficult time generalizing certain math skills that they learn in class, to actually be working in cash register and actually be calling in to their boss if they're going to be sick or figuring out how they're going to need to work on time. It's all those life skills that we take for granted. This is a great opportunity that we're able to provide them. And we just thank everyone involved. We'll also be down there wrapping presents.
Yeah, we'll be there all night. And, you know, encourage everyone to come down and support Common Grounds. It's a great vocational opportunity for students with disabilities, so.
And can you tell us what time we should expect you there?
So we're going to be there at the trolley from 4 o'clock to 9 o'clock.
Okay.
Probably don't want me wrapping any of your gifts.
[laughing]
Well, thank you all for coming tonight. This is just great news about the Holly Jolly Trolley in front of the Welcome Center and how it benefits Common Grounds and their students do great work. And I'd like to thank Ben also. Ben Florentine is the liaison from the city staff that works with the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, meeting on Monday mornings at 7:00 AM. So we really appreciate all that the students are doing and Ben and Amy working with the students. So we hope to see you all downtown for a wonderful, successful evening of Noel Night. Come down, you'll see your friends, find some hot chocolate, and enjoy Durango. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Would Kim Baxter, please come and introduce yourself to the podium?
Good evening. Kim Baxter, 1393 East Third Avenue. That's a tough group to follow. As most of you know, I'm a volunteer member of the Planning Commission for the city. And last night, we had an amazingly full agenda. Our meeting lasted until 10 o'clock. It was filled with preliminary and conceptual, conceptual plant projects that were submitted with single-family homes, townhomes. It had business expansion plans and our fabulous, albeit not short, hazard mitigation plan. And I just wanted to say that I greatly appreciate the work that the city staff does. They're detail-oriented, they're thorough, they're caring, and they just do wonderful work. It makes my job as a planning commission member much easier. They just do a fabulous job. So I want to make sure they get recognized for that because we know that the amount of applications that they've had over the last months and years since 2008 has increased immensely. And I think they're doing just a very good job. The applicants, and they work together to solve the, any concerns that might come up with the project. So when they get to us, it's pretty clean, it's easy to deal with, and it's very straightforward. So I just wanted to acknowledge that we all appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Carolyn Knight?
Hi, I'm Caroline. So I'm from Student Council and I'm the community ambassador. So I come once a month to update you on things happening at DHS. So most of these are just things that teachers sent me that they want me to share. So first up, Durango High School's Native American Club is hosting the annual Native American Winter Arts Market on Saturday, December 8th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Durango High School. And for more information on that, you can visit the Native American Club's page on the Durango High School website. At the Native American Market, Pete, Durango High School's Prejudice Elimination Action Team, will be having a breakfast burrito fundraiser with $5 burritos from CJ's Diner. On February 15th, 2019, is the annual Skills USA Colorado Region Eight Conference and Championships, hosted by the Skills USA Durango Chapter, and they're anticipating contests in skills such as carpentry, welding, and photography, to name a few. DHS's Business and Marketing Club had their regional competition in Craig on Monday, and they got first place overall and eight members qualified for the state competition in Colorado Springs. DHS Art Orchestra students held a concert at Fort Lewis College last Friday. And our theater program, Troop 1096, has wrapped up work on 9 to 5 and is moving on to the Underclassmen Gala, which is where underclassmen perform in shows written by seniors. As for Student Council, we started organizing Winter Week. We adopted the Project Merry Christmas families. We're doing that for the holidays. And we've also started organizing DHS Gives, which is a school-wide class competition where each class competes to raise the most amount of things. And all of that will go towards Southwest Safe House, La Plata County Humane Society, Durango Community Shelter, and the Women's Resource Center. And then if you have any questions or you have something that you think Student Council can help with, please email me at s.carolinek@durangoschools.org. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Amber Henry?
I have this down to about three minutes and 10 seconds. So please bear with me.
Ms. Henry, would you give your address, please?
Yes, I am at 29 Rio Vista Circle. And again, my name is Amber and I'm here to speak with you today about radio frequency, also known as microwave radiation in Durango, and the implications of the coming 5G rollout. For some background, I became ill a few years back after a telecom company installed 4G LTE communication mass on a power line near my house. I developed electromagnetic hypersensitivity, which means I have a noticeable physical response to electromagnetic radiation. And it was at this point, in addition to relocating to Durango, that I began to research the health effects of our wireless technologies and the radiation they emit. These frequencies have a measurable biological impact, whether you are sensitive to them or not. The BioInitiative Report of 2012 is a compilation of over 3,000 peer-reviewed studies on electromagnetic radiation, with 1,800 of these studies on the health effects of wireless radiation alone, all of them showing the biological effects of RF radiation levels well below the current FCC safety guidelines, which by the way, have not been updated since 1996. These effects include, but are not limited to insomnia and sleep disturbances, headaches, concentration and memory problems, fatigue, behavioral problems in children, anxiety and depression, decreased immunity, DNA breaks and mutations, heart arrhythmias, increased blood sugar levels in diabetics, autoimmune disease, neurodegenerative diseases, including Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, and multiple sclerosis, and cancer. I have taken readings of RF radiation levels on Third Avenue, about one block away from the West Building, where there is a swath of communication masks on the roof, up at Fort Lewis College by the Cell Tower, Durango Gymnastics, and other areas nearby, communication masks around town. Suffice it to say that the readings are very high, hundreds of thousands of times higher than levels at which scientists are finding biological effects. The people need to know. Video documentation of these readings can be found on my Facebook page, Surviving Modern. The public has a right to know that the implications of the 5G rollout are enormous, not only in terms of health, but in terms of property values. 5G is the fifth generation of wireless technology and involves the placement of small cells about every 300 feet throughout the city and in residential neighborhoods. This means that you could wake up one morning with the equivalent of a small cell tower right in your front yard. 5G will broadcast millimeter waves at frequencies of 35 to 100 gigahertz, that is 100 billion oscillations per second, up to 4,000% higher than our current 2.4 gigahertz technologies. The FCC intends to roll out this technology nationwide with little to no regard for public safety. I am calling on the City of Durango to place a moratorium on the installation of 5G infrastructure until this technology is proven safe. Please join me in getting the word out to fellow citizens. Again, you can contact me through my Facebook page, Surviving Modern, where I will be continuing to add videos and documentation of this extremely important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. John Simpson?
Mayor Marbury, John Simpson, 1831 Crestview Drive. Tonight, I'll be discussing recent budget topics that were not known at the November public hearing. We've been told that the budget woes are caused by the decreases in revenues. There are many of us who believe the problem is on the expenditure side, specifically escalating personnel costs. Using the excuse, the personnel costs, personnel cuts were implemented nine years ago, isn't convincing, and it doesn't help when the budget you will be approving tonight does not disclose salary raises. Staff presented you with the proposed budget two months ago. That budget had a column titled Adopted Budget, which was blank. Tonight, there isn't a complete budget presented, but rather, staff has proposed a list of items to be changed from the proposed budget. If past practices is repeated, there will be additional changes made that have not been presented to us, specifically related to salary increases. You're being asked to approve a budget that staff intends to modify after your approval. Raises for rank and file employees are very important, but there is no way to know the details of the planned raises. The budget for the compensation of the senior management could and should be disclosed prior to budget adoption tonight. Another major personnel expense is health insurance. It appears that the city health insurance is incurring unsustainable expenses. The $6.2 million of expenses next year is 1.2 million more than the estimated expenses this year. Up note, increased employee contributions and transfers from other funds are being used to pay for this increase. In order for us to understand the size of the problem, staff needs to disclose how they calculate the 2018 and 2019 year-end fund balance. This estimation should start with the 2017 actual fund balance, which was negative 638,000. Although the budget predicts a 2018 profit of 600,000, which would have eliminated that debt, the need for more money in 2019 leads me to believe that the insurance fund is in fact having a much worse year this year than the budget predicts. The prediction of year-end fund balances and disclosures of assumptions used is fundamental in any budget development. The budget lacks the fund balance calculation of self-insurance fund. I understand the budget was developed the same way as it has always been in the past, and staff is asking you to approve it, knowing they will change it later, as it has always been done. I hope you pay heed to what you're hearing at your listening sessions and that we have lost trust in the city. It will be impossible to regain trust by continuing to do things...
Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
...the way things have always been done.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Marbury.
Dave Woodruff?
City manager, I'm going to ask you a few questions. Will this is over?
Okay.
Hi, Dave. My name is Dave Woodruff. I'm the Durango Chapter President of the Colorado Restaurant Association. And the reason I'm here today, I just wanted to do you all to really take a look at the lodgers tax revenue and where it's being allocated. I know Frank Lockwood was here on this past Tuesday. I think he presented a really good argument. And I don't feel that raising lodgers tax is going to solve the problem. I think we need to take a 30,000-foot view of where that money is going and as the city in general. And I think we're limiting ourselves by being too entrenched in the day-to-day operations. A business mentor of mine says sometimes you need to focus on the business and not be in the business too much. Sometimes you gotta go up and be on the mountain, take a look at the city in general and see where we're going and how we track forward. As Frank presented, the return on investment is 875%. We spend $38 per capita in the City of Durango, whereas Piggles Springs spends 417. Their budget is larger than ours and the city a tenth of our size. One out of every four jobs, mine included, is dependent upon tourism. And we spend a lot of money within our community in sales tax revenue and then just spending in general. In the City of Durango's $92 million budget, Frank is only asking for $175,000. With that being said, the lodgers tax revenue that is coming in, the city is projected to take 475,000 out of that to pay for the Ailing Transit System. So you're still giving $300,000. That's, in my mind, should be going towards tourism as the stipulation, or as the, whatever it is, the...
Ordinance.
Yes, thank you, ordinance, that's the word. As the ordinance is saying that it should be going towards. It's our duty to invest in our city's transit, but not at the expense of something that gives us, you know, so much in the ROI. Ms. Mayor, you know, you said that, you know, people celebrate what they don't have. Sometimes they don't even know what they don't have. So I think it's up to us as a tourism-driven economy to really project what Durango has. What's our brand? How are we going to, how are we going to give people an idea of what we, the scope of what we have? People come to Durango for many reasons, but some of... but some of us never leave. I moved to Durango January 7th of 2005. I decided on a Tuesday I was going to move here. I was here that Friday with all my stuff in my car, and literally that's it. And I really feel that, you know, whenever I moved here, somebody said, right when I walked in the front door of my new house, they're like, "Welcome home." And that was to me like a... But that's hospitality, you know? That's what this community has given me. So I really feel like it would be doing the community disservice by not projecting out what Durango is. And by doing that, I think the tourism... The tourism office is giving people that. So just, I really want you to take a look at that and see where that money's going. And like I said, you're still coming out $300,000 over. But, yeah.
Thank you very much. Just for clarification, Mr. Woodruff, we asked the city attorney last week about the use of the funds. And Mr. Nelson, would you clarify that the city is using the funds as it is set up?
I'd said that I thought that the use of the funds is for uses authorized in the ordinance.
Okay, just to clarify.
Sure.
We can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. So just, you said you thought, so it's subjective. And to me, the way the ordinance is written, it is written that it should go towards tourism and then also towards...
There's transit in there also.
It's subjective. I think we can all look at it through our own lens and, you know, for however we want.
I understand. Thank you very much.
Of course.
That concludes a portion of public participation. City Manager had a question concerning health insurance. Has the health insurance for the City of Durango have they had catastrophic illnesses this year?
Yes, we've had three consecutive years with high claims, and we're self-insured. And that has contributed to the costs going forward into 2019.
Have all city departments made cuts in order to accommodate the health premiums? And will city employees be paying, asked to be paying more out of their pocket?
Yes, city employees are asked to pay more, and departments cut, I think, in neighborhood $400,000.
When it comes to pay raises, do you have merit pay raises?
The only raises we give are based on merit, based on the performance, annual performance as documented in a personnel evaluation.
And what is the percentage rate that's been allocated in the city budget?
It will be no greater than 2% based on merit.
Thank you very much for that information. I appreciate that, since all the departments have had to make drastic cuts to accommodate some of these unforeseen expenditures. City Manager, has the insurance company, the one that you're using, do you have a broker? Have you been shopping for health insurance?
Well, we use a broker. And the broker then shops for the coverages. And based on the choices we have, we make an informed decision.
Thank you very much for that information.
I would also follow up concerning the salary contingency budget line item. The performance evaluations are completed, what, later this month?
Yes.
And so the budget has to have a figure in there that can accommodate the raises, even though it is not known at the time of the budget's formulated exactly who's going to get what. And so it has struck me as a member of the council that that is a reasonable way of budgeting for salary contingencies.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
For your benefit, I know you've been over these figures previously in numerous hours of budget discussions. The self-insurance fund balance at the end of 2017, so as of 12/31/2017, was $606,529. We are estimating at the end of this year, at 12/31/18, it'll be $6,110. I'm thinking I may not have read the first number. Did I say 606,529?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so from $606,000 down to $6,000 is what it's gone down in catastrophic year. And then next year, we are predicting that fund balance will come up a little bit at $288,028. But again, we can't predict claims, and medical costs are escalating.
I believe I read the same thing in the Durango Herald concerning NAR and their insurance woes. Thank you very much for that information.
I want to correct myself. It's a negative fund balance. I'm not reading the number right. In 2017, of $606,000.
Thank you. We are moving into introduction of ordinances. And I'll begin with 10.1, an ordinance granting La Plata Economic Development Association an easement located over a portion of city-owned property to install power lines for service to the new City of Durango Parks and Office and Shop and declaring an effective date. This is the Moore Park Shop.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's ordinance O-2018-24.
All right. Are there any questions from council? If not, I will look for a motion.
This is all straightforward. I move that we approve ordinance 2018-24.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Bricky?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Yousaf?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. Moving into 10.2, an ordinance amending Article 3 of Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Durango to regulate the use of motor vehicles on parks, trails, and open space, and creating exceptions for the use of Class 1 and Class 2 electrical assisted. And who's presenting? Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, this is ordinance O-2018-25. Again, this is a follow-up on the public hearing that was held at the last council meeting. It also follows more than a year's input and test of having e-bikes, Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes on hard surface trails. There are some minor changes to definitions in the ordinance, but the gist of the ordinance is that it incorporates the change in rules to allow Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes on hard surface trails in the city.
I understand.
I'm excited to make a motion to adopt the ordinance O-2818-25.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor Bricky?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Yousaf?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. Moving into council reports and actions. I'm going to go ahead and start tonight. And just, we didn't have... It didn't quite work out for us to be able to have a proclamation for the December 15th Bill of Rights Day. So I'd like to mention this ahead of time. Our next meeting is December the 18th. But I think every day we need to observe the Bill of Rights, the First Amendments, all the articles there. They make our country much better. We have certain freedoms that other countries do not enjoy. And so I'm bringing this to the attention of the community of Durango. Also, we have an interim commander in the audience tonight. Would you please come to the podium? I want the community to... I want you to say hello, introduce yourself. This is Commander Brammer. This is... He didn't know I was going to do this.
I did not.
But please tell us your new role for the city.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Bob Brammer, the commander with the Durango PD, and I'm going to be the interim police chief until we conduct our search this spring.
Thank you very much, Commander. We always appreciate the men and women in blue at city council meetings, the long hours that they put in, the dedication to service in our community. And they go anywhere and everywhere when you call. So how grateful I am to you.
It's a great pleasure. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Commander Brammer just returned from the FBI Academy where he graduated from Quantico, Virginia. I also had the pleasure of doing a ride-along with Commander Brammer about 11 years ago. And he's done well in the interim. So go from patrol officer to acting chief.
That speaks for all of our city, that we promote from within and that we certainly respect all the men and women and their dedication.
I pursue all the opportunities.
So thank you very much, Commander. We sure appreciate it. Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you, sir. Okay, councilors, reports and actions?
I'm going to pass. Thank you.
Mayor Potem?
I just wanted to touch base on La Plata Economic Development Alliance. It is officially Roger Zee's last day on the 6th of this week. So we are having discussions as a board for an interim director, and we are putting together a search committee for a formal, our final executive director. And it's been a good process, and Roger will be missed. So I definitely wanted to recognize him tonight.
Thank you.
If I could, I'm also going to respond to some of the lodger's tax stuff, but I think I'll do that in the budget process.
Okay. Counselor Bricky?
I was attending the Public Art Commission meeting this morning. And I have to say that group is doing some really good work and look forward to a presentation they're going to make to council in our breakfast meeting sometime in early February in terms of their new mission and a lot of the things that have been the competition for the artwork along the median strip coming into town and what progress in community engagement is surrounded around that effort. And just a lot of good work that I'd like to recognize them for.
Thank you. Counselor White?
Yeah. I continue having hear-to-hear sessions on Thursday mornings, 11:30, in the city manager's conference room across the hall. I'll be doing that for the next three weeks before a two-week holiday hiatus. I wanted to note that Durango is now a LEED-certified city. That's leadership in environmental and efficiency, I believe, efficiency and environmental design. And this is sort of the standard for buildings and now for communities that are trying to achieve high environmental performance. This is a consequence of our three-star rating of sustainability rating. And I believe the work plan for 2019 includes compiling the data that would get us to a four-star rating. There are multiple upcoming events that are worth mentioning. Tomorrow, there is the third and final meeting of the College and Eighth Avenue Character District Meetings. This is 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Park School. On Thursday, at noon, 12:30 PM, San Juan Basin Public Health is having a suicide prevention forum at the library. In the evening, at 5:30, there's a neighborhood meeting regarding ADUs at the Unitarian Universalist Association on San Juan Drive. On Friday, you've heard about Noel Night. Next Wednesday, the Green Business Roundtable will be Daniel Krieger, who is the Executive Director of the Association of Climate Change Officers and driving force behind the Compact of Colorado Communities. And he'll be telling us more about those efforts. In the evening, there is going to be, around Mr. Krieger's visit, a meeting about resilient Durango at the REC Center. And this is really seeking to gain community input on how Durango can be more resilient in all ways against natural disasters, climate change-related or not. And finally, next Thursday at 5:30 PM, there's a community meeting at the REC Center about the Animus River Trail Extension. And I know there's some significant community interest in that. And finally, we got a notice from the Southwest Center for Independence that they have a program for low-vision seniors. And if you are interested in the help that they can offer, contact Susan Weiss at the Southwest Center for Independence.
Thank you.
Mayor, I guess I have one more event that I forgot to tell the community about, and that is that the ACLU is going to be coming to Durango with the National Law Center on homelessness and poverty. And this is on December 12th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at the La Plata County Fairgrounds. And they are going to bring together various nonprofits in our community. I will be attending with Counselor Bateen. And we will be listening and speaking with the community about innovative solutions for solving homelessness. That's what they're titling this. So we look forward to participating in that event as well.
Thank you. We are moving into, a portion by Julie Brown, our finance director, discussion and possible action to consider a resolution adopting the 2019 annual budget for the City of Durango. Ms. Brown?
Mayor Marbury and city council members, the city manager's proposed budget for 2019 has been reviewed and discussed by the city council. The proposed budget outlines and details the purpose and extent of each expenditure in each of the accounting funds. In addition, a public hearing was held on November 5th, 2018, to allow public participation and input. Per council's direction, certain amendments have been made to estimated revenues and proposed expenditures. Amendments as recommended by staff have also been incorporated. Staff amendments are in the matter, are in the nature of corrections and adjustments as a result of better information obtained since the budget was first originally proposed back in September. During reconciliation, a list of items were reviewed by the city council. The attached resolution has incorporated all the amendments, both staff's and city council's, as discussed with city council at budget reconciliation on November 27th, 2018. Any changes or amendments to the proposed budget, both revenues and expenditures, are summarized below. And I am not going to read every single change line there, but they are all listed. The fiscal impact, the city manager's 2019 budget will authorize spending in the amount of $92,407,661 for operating funds and $29,275,591 for capital improvement programs. It is a recommendation of the city manager myself that city council by motion approve the attached resolution adopting the 2019 budget for the City of Durango.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. There's been a lot of discussion about the budget. How long have you worked for the City of Durango?
My start is 2002.
2002, okay. So would you say there's quite a few cuts in here by departments?
Absolutely. I would say that each budget year is difficult. You know, we went through the recession, which was extremely difficult. We made a lot of budget cuts in 2009, 2010. Probably this year is probably, um, you know, the, the next largest cuts that I've seen since I've been here. Just trying to come to terms with what we can live within our means and how we can reduce so we can take care of our employees, take care of the services that we provide and the citizens want us to provide.
And, uh, the one new employee that I, that we all saw is in the Fats Oil and Grease, and that is from an enterprise fund?
Correct, that's in the sewer fund. And the sewer fund is funded, as you said, it's an enterprise fund. They are funded by the rates and fees and charges that the users pay to fund that service.
And so, the other enterprise funds, they have capital projects, they pay their own way, basically?
Correct.
Based on the fees that they accumulate, uh, that, for the services that are, that they provide?
Correct.
Okay. Police Department, you don't have any, you don't have any, uh, enterprise funds, nor do the streets. And so, um, and we've had these catastrophic health insurance situations. That happened in other organizations, not just this one, that have caused, uh, as I wrote someone an email, these budgets have been cut to the bone, it looks like to me. Comments from city council?
I would simply remark that the $92 million is a huge number. It's really important to look a little more closely at that and understand that the general fund, which is what we are talking about in terms of supporting our, uh, public, public safety, street maintenance, library, and so on, is less than half of that. It's 41, it's slightly less than $41 million. Still a very large number. And yet, um, as, as we've experienced on the council and the staff has dealt with, as, as the requests have come in from all the departments, that's millions of dollars of less than departments have asked. We'd really like to have this too. And the budget hasn't accommodated that. But I think the, um, people, you know, understanding the pieces is an important piece of this whole, of this whole process and what's in the general fund and what is in the, the other funds. And, um, we've had a lot of discussion about the, uh, general fund and the, um, ballot issue 2A. We will have more such discussions because there is still a systemic shortfall in the general fund.
Uh, thank you very much. Any other councilors commenting on the budgets?
I just wanted to make the comment that I've made before, which is that if you've been through the city's budget process, it's probably one of the most impressive parts of watching the city staff and, uh, the people that work for the city. Certainly, both of you are exceptional and really appreciate all the energy and effort that you put into this. And, um, city manager and city managers, we really appreciate everything that you do to inform us along the way. This is a culmination of about six months of work for us, but I think 12 months of work for you guys. And, uh, I just wanna tell you how impressed I always am with, um, all the detail, all the preparation and all the accuracy. It's greatly appreciated by the city.
And I would just add that I think you stated it very well, Ms. Brown, when you suggested that, um, you've worked really hard. The entire staff has worked really hard to, number one, take care of employees, and number two, maintain what we have. And that has been the goal. And I, we did see cuts in every single area. It was, um, it was in a very impressive process like Councilor Bateen is suggesting. And to that end, with the lodgers tax, I, I just wanna reiterate, we had a council room full of people and we have had, um, you know, some very, um, you know, compelling and real arguments of why it would be a benefit to increase our lodgers tax. I, I think all of council recognizes that need, and I think all of council would like to see that be a priority in the future when we can get there. But after going through this process and seeing, uh, the cuts that have been made, um, every, so many different line items that we just, we, we just can't get there at this time. And so, I ask that as a community, we, we, we keep this dialogue alive and we, um, come together in the future for further discussions on that end. And I did wanna commend you as well on really a great job, um, and transparent and very open, and we really appreciate all the dialogue around it.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protim. Yes, it's, uh, when you, I, I don't think I see a budget book up here, but it's about this thick. And we go through each page, line by line, uh, different sessions, all day, uh, different presentations. So, we have looked and have cut and have raised some fees. We've listened to people who said do all of the above. And so, that is exactly what the city has done. They have raised some fees where they could, uh, and they have made cuts in all the, uh, the departments where they can to keep our city of employees and also keep our services going. So, I really appreciate it. I've lived here about 45 years, maybe not as long as you have, but, uh, I certainly have seen changes in the city. I think good changes, okay? I can tell you, I don't see billboards anymore down Main Street. I think that's a good change. I see some wonderful lighting. Sure didn't have the Animus Trail when I was here. And, uh, Three Springs didn't exist, it was just a bunch of fields. So, we, we don't close the gate just because you're here. We welcome people. You came here in 2005, you know, and you got welcomed by people. How lovely is that? And so, uh, we have been providing a lot of services from the library. Hey, it's still closed on Sundays from the 2009 recession. Can't find the money to open it. It's not because we don't want to, it's not because we haven't heard from teenagers who would love to have the library open on Sundays. It's just that there's not enough money in the general revenue fund. Okay, it's not the airport fund, it's not the sewer fund, it's the, the general revenue. That's sales tax. You buy on Amazon, you, we can't hire anymore policemen. You buy someplace south of, uh, Durango, streets won't get any better as far as that goes. That's what's really in the general revenue fund. There's different buckets of money. So, it's our job to explain that to everybody as often as we can. Different buckets of money. It's not all the same. And so, uh, we look at the, the, uh, the budget and, golly, here's one for, uh, decrease to recycling center repair and maintenance, $1,500. Those are the kind of cuts that we're seeing in all these departments. $1,500 here, $2,000 here. It's been, uh, over, it's a fabulous process to be a part of. I'm proud to work for the city of Durango. I'm proud to work for you. And what I have learned, uh, being on council is you can't make everybody happy. You just try to do the very best that you can and hope that we can all keep our friendships, even if we don't always agree on how to get there. We all have the same love for Durango in our heart. So, with that, I will, oh, sorry.
So, one, you know, in, in contrast to a number of the things we've heard about, um, employees being added to the city of Durango, that we, this budget represents one full-time equivalent employee. That's that Fats Oil and Grease guy.
Yes.
Or woman that's gonna be hired for a mandated, uh, uh, environmental effort. And that's, uh, you know, that's, we've heard 30% increase in, you know, uh, employees in the city of Durango. That's just not, uh, accurate. It's not even representative, close to being representative of what this budget represents. So, one new person in the city of Durango, uh, employed by the city of Durango, um, is certainly not what is being represented out there in the community right now, so.
And it's my understanding that all the directors get together. I mean, last year, I think there was a library person hired? I think it was in last year's budget.
Uh, yes.
And I, I know that we're still understaffed going back to even 2009. We still don't have the staff that, in the library that we had in 2009. And the directors get together and you make your compelling case, and then I make my compelling case, and, and they are the ones who make the decision to give that library person a, a job. And it's still not where it was in 2009. Comments?
Yeah, I have one final comment that was justified, uh, Councilor Brookie's remark. And, and that is that, you know, we've heard a lot about 30% increases since 2011. Well, if you go back to 2008, before the recession, as opposed to after the, we cut 37 positions in the general fund, those are two very different situations. And it is true that we have restored, since the depth of the recession, uh, positions have been restored. They're not necessarily the same ones. They're, and I, I think in few cases, the same people. And, uh, the, one of the things I have learned is the astuteness of, of the manager and his senior staff in choosing really, really well-qualified individuals who, uh, we even, we encounter on a day-to-day basis as the public servants who are, do the day-to-day work in the city. And, uh, I have been extremely impressed by the quality of our personnel, the quality of our staff. And, um, we're able to do much more than, uh, with the staff now, probably than was done. I won't speak to what happened 10 years ago because I wasn't here. But I will speak, speak to the professionalism and qualifications for the staff that we have.
Thank you. And you know what? If it snows on Thursday and you see a snowplow driver out at 1 o'clock in the morning, uh, if you're shoveling snow, know that those guys have been to work a, a long time. And they're working for you to keep the streets clean and safe. And, um, they work long hours. So, we're gonna have a great winter, we're gonna have a fantastic season for tourism. I've got my fingers crossed. And, um, we are certainly lucky to live here. I'll always say that. With that, I will, um, look for some approval of this resolution.
What is the resolution?
49, uh, or 2018, 49.
So, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2018 dash 49.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Councilor Brookie?
Yes.
Councilor Bateen?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Yousaf?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. Uh, moving into, woo-hoo, let me go back here. Moving into 12.2, an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amounts and for the purpose as set forth below for the city of Durango, Colorado, for the 2019 budget year. That's a mouthful. Who's gonna take that one?
Yep, so this is under ordinance, um, introducing an ordinance appropriating the sums of the money. Whereas the city council has adopted the annual budget in accordance with the charter of the city of Durango on December 4th, 2018. And whereas, the city council has made provisions therein for estimated revenues and reserve carryovers, also known as fund balances, and the amount equal to or greater than the total proposed expenditures as set forth in said budget. And whereas, it is required by charter to pass an ordinance appropriating the estimated revenues and reserve carryovers, also known as fund balances provided in the budget, to add and for the funds described below, so as not to impair the operations of the city. Now, therefore, it be ordained by the city council of the city of Durango, Colorado, Section 1, that the following sums are hereby appropriated from the estimated revenues and reserve carryovers of each operating fund to each fund. General Fund, $40,892,571. 2015 Sales Tax Fund, $5,033,509. Road Impact Fee Fund, $225,000. Durango Tourism Fund, $1,215,584. General Services Fund, $259,748. Capital Equipment Replacement Fund, $3,934,065. Risk Manager Fund, $1,167,581. Self Insurance Fund, $6,273,580. Water Fund, $10,716,344. Sewer Fund, $12,172,900. Airport Fund, $3,764,469. Sustainable Services Fund, $2,850,666. Transportation Services Fund, $3,901,644. Total operating expenditures in the amount of $92,407,661. Section, Section 2, that the following sums are hereby appropriated from the estimated revenues and unappropriated reserves of each capital projects fund to each fund. Airport Capital Construction Fund, $8,783,634. Open Space Parks and Trails Fund, $2,156,740. Capital Improvements Fund, $2,426,417. Capital Projects Fund, $4,718,800. Water Capital Projects Fund, $6,397,500. Sewer Capital Projects Fund, $4,417,500. Sustainable Services Capital Projects Fund, $225,000. Transportation Services Capital Projects Fund, $150,000. Total Capital Improvement Expenditures, $29,275,591.
And there's nothing in there for streets, is that correct?
That is correct. There are no general fund CIP projects.
And these are enterprise funds that pay their own way?
Or dedicated sales tax.
Or dedicated sales tax, so there's no...
And then that, yeah.
Okay, no major street projects going to happen in 2019. Any discussion from city council?
Just to verify, is this, um, ordinance 26?
26.
I'll look for a motion.
I move we approve ordinance 2018, 26.
A second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Bateen?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Brookie?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Yousaf?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. 12.3 is a discussion and possible action to consider a resolution establishing a 2018 mill levy for the city of Durango. Ms. Brown?
Mayor Marbury and the city council. Per sentence of state statutes, the city of Durango, Durango shall adopt the mill levy and certify that same to the La Plata County Commissioners by December 15th of each year. The assessed valuation for 2018, as certified by the assessor's office on December 1st, 2018, is $554,463,420. This is a $5,47,180 increase in value from 2017. The assessed value includes $5,141,280 from new construction and $1,721,410 from new annexations. Assessment ratio for residential properties is 7.2%. All other properties assessed at 29% of actual value. The city's mill levy is 5.007 mill will generate approximately $2,776,198 in net revenues to the city. The city of Durango's taxpayer will pay the city approximately $126 in property taxes on a home valued at $350,000, assessed value of $25,200. Fiscal impact, as I stated above, 5.007 mills will generate about $2.776,198 for the city's general fund. And as a recommendation, the city manager at the city council by motion approve the attached resolution levying property taxes for the year 2018.
Thank you. Any questions from city council?
Just a comment, I just think that in the process of going through and looking at the revenue structural issues that the city faces, one of the things that comes up a lot of the time is that we should have a tax increase for property taxes. They're more sustainable, they go up over time, et cetera. And if you, um, look at our tax structure in the city, it's predominantly funded by sales tax. And you can see from these numbers that even if we were able to double your assessment or your mill levy, it would not raise enough money to pay for the substantial capital improvement needs we have in the city for the streets. And it's fairly obvious if you look at these numbers here. So, that, that continues to come up, but the, the founders of the city went with sales tax and we're, we're kinda stuck with sales tax until something else comes along.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I would also remark that half of the five, well, 2.50 out of the 5.007 mills was voted last year by, by the, uh, citizens of Durango for, dedicated to the Durango Fire Protection District. So, there's even, there's half as much here that it actually looks like. The rest of our, what is it, $5 million a year to the fire department has to come out of the rest of the general fund.
Right.
And, um, and that's contractual obligation, we will pay that. But that's $5 million in the general fund, that, uh, $5 million out of the $40 million in the general fund, for which we have no flexibility whatsoever.
I voted for that, uh, for the, for the fire department. I voted for it. I think most people in this room probably voted for it. And I, I thought it was a good deal, but it's a pass-through. You know, we're not keeping the, the money, it just passes right on down the road to the fire department. I think it's a good deal. We don't have, uh, employees that are fire, firemen anymore. We used to, but that's all, that's changed several years ago. So, I have no problem as a pass-through. I voted for the schools. I support the schools in this community. That's for my property taxes. That's an obligation that someone gave me, that, that opportunity, and I am giving it to somebody else's children. So, uh, I appreciate that. And we were criticized for that in different emails, would you believe that? So, um...
So, to put that in perspective, what Councilor White would just said, for $350,000 house, $126 in property taxes comes from the city. That's, actually, half of that goes to the fire department. So, for $350,000 house, the city gets about $60 to $70 annually for your house. And most houses, yeah, so, that's, that's, as your straight Bateen just said, you know, that's...
Fire protection, police, police protection, um...
Running the city.
Yes, running the city.
Running the city.
Blackberry?
It's a pretty good deal, I thought. Mr. Rutter, I think it's a pretty good deal living here. Your property taxes are probably not as high as they are in Houston, Texas, for example. Or in Farmington, New Mexico. We pay less here, I think, than in Farmington, New Mexico.
So... And since this has been, was in the news during the campaign around 2A, um, the city of Montrose has zero property tax levied by the city of Montrose. However, their parks and rec department, their, uh...
Their library.
Their, uh, library, and there's another, they have, and the fire department are all paid directly to special districts with a total mill levy of 15.7, which is more than, uh, three times what we pay.
So, I don't think, it's called apples and oranges with that Montrose comparison. They pay, they pay more in their, uh, mill levy than you do. So, it's, that's why I wrote that article called "Apples and Oranges." If you didn't have a chance to read it, you might wanna go back. Also, the Durango Herald, I sure wanna thank you for, uh, publishing, I believe, the paving index. I think I saw that in the Durango Herald. There was a five-year study just recently that came out of a five-year paving index of the city's streets. Shows all of the streets and where they are in their, um, evaluation for work. Some are failing, like Thomas, Animus Drive, Forest, and some just need a thin overlay like Confluence, for example, out in Three Springs. So, if you have a chance, go online and look at the Durango Herald. I believe we had 24 pages of information for city residents about where their money was going to be used for street maintenance. Okay, I'm gonna keep, continue on and, um...
We need to.
Oh, you're sure right. Hey, how about a...
Is this is resolution number 50?
50.
All right, looking for a motion?
I will move that we approve Resolution R. 20,000, 2018-50.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Yusuf?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Brookie?
Yes.
Councilor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. And just to give you one more bit of information, today at 4 o'clock, we had a meeting of the Council of Councils. I had invited back former city councillors and mayors to talk about the police station and streets and the 2A. And we received wonderful information, and I so appreciate all of their participation. And we've been doing this as listening to our city residents and also to former councillors, getting their view. And so we appreciate everyone who has participated. And if you haven't had a chance to communicate to the City Council, please do via email at citycouncil@durangogov.org. We'd love to hear from you. And with that, I'm going to...
Now, could I add one more comment?
Go.
If you are going to send in a written communication, please do it in the next day or two. Staff is compiling a record of all of the comments we've received. And that is going to be distributed in the, distributed on Friday in the agenda packet for next Tuesday's study session. So if you want to get your two cents in, please do it quickly.
We appreciate everyone's viewpoint and look forward to learning more from you, our neighbors and friends. And with that, we'll see you at our next City Council meeting, which will be December the 18th. See you at Noel Night.